Jeff, you stole our website picture, man.
I did. I got one of the football field, too.
Well, it turned out nice.
Do we have the logos on yet, Hal? Or has he been, has he came out, do you know?
No, he's not.
Okay, I know he's been busy with all the COVID stuff we're trying to put in place.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular virtual meeting of the Oregon City Schools Board of Education of December fifteenth. We'll have the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence. Moment of silence this evening is for Edna Hokes, who was a librarian at Star, and then a head librarian for the district, and Joanne McGee, who was a thirty-year bus driver for us.
I pledge of the.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Ruth?
Certainly. Mr. Shea?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Here.
And Mr. Zavisky?
Yeah.
Next, we need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Question?
Rule. Mr. Shea, I'm sorry. Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
No.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item number five, we're going to skip this evening. Public participation is item number six. Do we have any emails, Mr. Gregory?
No, I do not have any.
Thank you. Moving to number seven, the treasurer's report, please.
All right, thank you. I emailed, or I put it up into the, excuse me, the Google file, Brief Treasurer's Report today. Just quickly, the true cash that was sent out probably a week or so ago. The revenues are up a little bit, like 1.7% from last year. The majority of that is based on improved real estate tax collections. We had increases in our utility property, which is really lovely because we get full millage on that. So that's a nice hit, a nice, nice for our school district. The expenses beyond salaries and fringes are actually down. Salaries and fringes are as we anticipated. But then we're clearly having some savings, not intentionally, from educating remotely. You know, we aren't spending gas. We aren't, you know, we aren't using as much paper, things like that. So our expenses are actually trending a little bit under the budget. I wanted to bring your attention, I, we want to talk as a group on this, or it's a pretty simplistic process. We do have a refinancing opportunity. We have about twenty-two point four five million left of our bond. That'll be coming due. Our current average coupon rate is three point six percent. We are currently in like the lowest interest rates in frankly, in our lifetimes at least. And I had a gentleman reach out that was, we've been watching it for some time. We had refinanced in two thousand and thirteen. So our, you know, that we had a three point six isn't horrifying in terms of rates. But we would have an opportunity, you know, to be conservative, about two percent. So that's a one and a half percent reduction. This would be a refinancing called a direct placement premium bond, which is less burdensome. The last time in two thousand and thirteen, that was a lot of work. Mr. Zoller and I, our doctor Zoller and I went to New York. We had to defend it, blah, blah, blah. This is, and then you had to, we had, you know, people bidding in. You weren't real sure what your rates are. This is a much more controlled, that if it doesn't come in well, we just ignore it. They think we could probably say a hundred and eleven thousand dollars a year on the bond fund. It's not big money. The last time, obviously, we save much more. But over the life, the remaining life of debt, it'd be one point two million. It'd save annually taxpayers about point two out of the bond fund. I'm, I'm just, you know, trying to get a gauge. Obviously, I don't have the paperwork. But I would appreciate input. If you're interested in this, going further with this, I'll check with another of my contacts to see if, you know, he'd have a different suggestion. But I don't see any downside to it. It's one of those things that if it doesn't come in as good as we'd like, unlike the other way we did it, you can walk away from it. No harm, no foul, no cost. So I wanted to get that out there, and we can talk further in the investment committee. But I wanted to like move it forward with this unless someone, I can't see why we won't, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention before I spent.
Will that require a board approval, Jane?
Yes, of course it will.
Okay.
So it'd be the next board meeting that I'd have it finalized. But I wanted to put it, get it in front of you to start, you know. I can't see a downside, but I can't hear anybody else, you know, I'll listen to anybody. As far as, I want to make the taxpayers, or rather, the parents aware, the fee refunding process is underway. It's going to feel very slow, but I know we'll have at least ninety-four checks going out tomorrow. But it's going to take some time, but we'll get these out hopefully before the new year. We are working on it. And then finally, the district gap financial statements were completed and filed in a timely manner. And they're, they'll be available on the district website, or in the, it's already available in the district. And obviously, the state auditors are in process of the audit. So I just wanted to bring you up to date, and if there are any questions, let me know. I can discuss it at this time.
I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report, please.
Don't move.
Second.
Mike seconded.
I thought I heard that. Sorry about that. Okay.
Roll call?
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Do you, anyone see a need for an executive session at this time, or shall we wait till the end of the meeting? Anyone want one now? Okay, seeing no one, we will go to the end of the meeting with that. We'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda items. Someone make a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
I'm sorry, second.
Second.
Roll call?
Right. Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, moving on to new business. Item A is the twenty twenty-one school calendar. I need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one school calendar as presented on the website, please. I have a motion.
Don't move. Second.
Question?
Hal, can you just explain this a little bit, kind of the changes, you know, not a real change to the calendar, but really kind of how we implement the new school year that me and Keith kind of addressed with you?
Yeah, essentially, the first day of school is the same, last day of school is the same. But how we, how we are, I guess, bringing kids into school, and when we are doing our schedule pickup days and device distributions have all been moved to the first week, with kids starting a few days later. So it allows us to, I guess, you know, meet the wishes of the board for not starting the school year with activities related to school any earlier than, than what the calendar date was. But, but also allows us to take care of those things we need to take care of, I guess, as school begins that we do annually. And we kind of learned this year that through the COVID, one, one positive thing was the phase-in process of our school. So what we're doing is this is allowing us to have for elementaries during the first week. We'll have a couple of professional development days for staff. But then we're going to also have essentially one-on-one parent conferences for all the elementary kids through the rest of that week. We believe it's a real strong relationship-building piece, and our, and our families really appreciated it this year. A lot of positive feedback, just kind of going into the year. And then it also allows us to do a freshman-only day at Clay High School, which we haven't done in a long time, to get kids fully acclimated throughout the, throughout the day on their own. So we'll continue with the five and six and seven and eight days, how we've done before, where we bring in seventh grade one day, eighth grade one day, and then everyone the next. So those are the basic changes in that first week. We still have plenty of hours above the minimum state hours, you know, which is always a concern. So I feel that we've met the needs of your request, Jeff, and others, but also made it to the advantage of the families by doing some of these conferences and things that really will make the transition smooth for kids, hopefully.
So how the, all the kind of things we used to do, the open houses, the drop-off supplies, the pictures, all done after school starts, the only thing that kids would come in for sports practices, any extracurriculars, like at Clay, the painting of the parking spots, that kind of stuff, volunteer that they want to do. Everything else is after school starts.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item B, under new business, we need a motion to accept the following donations. Northwood Industries donated a starit coordinate measuring machine with an estimated value of six thousand dollars to the Integrated Machining and Engineering Program at Clay High School. And Ford Motor Company donated seven thousand disposable face masks valued at four thousand nine hundred seventy dollars to the Automotive Technologies Program at Clay. Now I have a motion to accept these, please.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yeah. Item C, under new business, Course Offerings Handbook at Clay High School. We need a motion to approve the twenty-one twenty-two Course Offerings Handbook for Clay High School. This handbook has been distributed to the board. I have a motion, please.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item D, the Eastern Mommy Bay Chamber of Commerce. We need a motion to renew the membership in the Eastern Mommy Bay Chamber of Commerce for twenty twenty-one. The fee is four hundred dollars. Now I have a motion, please.
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
I'm going to abstain because I'm on the board and on the treasurer's chamber.
Sure. All right, Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item E, the OSBA Policy Service. We need a motion to renew the agreement with OSBA to provide a web-based policy service at a cost of one thousand five hundred dollars. Now you have a motion, please?
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item F is the appointment of the president pro temp. OSBA has recommended that boards of education appoint a president pro temp at the December board meeting so that the organizational meeting in July can be opened up by that person. Thus, it would be appropriate at this time to appoint a president pro temp that would be effective January first, two thousand and twenty, for the organizational meeting. Mrs. Miller, I'd like to appoint you to that. Will you take it, please?
Sure.
Okay, item G, flex spending plan. We need a motion to approve the flex spending plan for medical and childcare. Now I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Oh, can I, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this in my, I had an old report here. The only thing that's changing on this is they now use, we're with CoreSource that handles this, but they use Trustmark, and that's the reason they sent us the new contracts. It starts January. So I apologize, I didn't mention that in my treasurer's report.
Hey, any other discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item H, disposal of equipment and materials. We need a motion to dispose of the following. Item A and P, which are basically books and supplementary materials. Now you have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
I'm sorry, who made the motion? I missed it. Oh, Mike, I apologize. All right, thank you. Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item I, evaluations. We need a motion to approve teacher and counselor evaluations for the twenty twenty-one school year as being impractical to complete, with the exception of one-year limited contract individuals and any individual on an improvement plan. Principal evaluations will be completed without a student growth measure component. All other provisions of HB four oh four will be followed. Now I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item J, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed in the November seventeenth agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. Okay, moving to superintendent's report, Mr. Gregory.
Thanks, Mrs. Mulnar. Just have a real quick overview of just a couple of things that we're all dealing with right now. Not sure if everyone is aware, but the recent Health Department order was, was challenged. And that, that was upheld, the order was upheld yesterday by a judge, keeping the order in place for school and sports. So I just, I bring that to your attention, only that there are rumors out there that the Health Department may again be looking at possibly amending the order specifically for sports to allow practices to happen. Not sure if that'll happen or not happen. So I'm just bringing it, I guess, to your attention. If, if that order is amended in any official way, I do intend to, I guess, support those amendments, you know, related to sports practices and that type of thing. But we'll see if anything actually happens. But I did want to, you know, that's the rumor floating around in my circles that, that it could happen. I know it was discussed by the Health Commissioner prior to the lawsuit. So I guess I'm assuming that that's still something that's in their mind, but we'll see. And then in addition, unless the order is extended past January eleventh, it is going to be certainly my recommendation, my plan to continue to, to move forward with the idea that we'll bring kids back on the eleventh in the way that we had intended to do prior to that Thanksgiving break, which was students would come back to school four days a week in grades K through six, which would be that kind of that Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday plan, and then hybrid seven through twelve. And, you know, I know the leadership team certainly is in support of, of getting our kids back when we're allowed to. We feel like the hybrid model at the seven through twelve is going to allow us to contact trace hopefully a lot better than we were doing with, with everybody in place. But, you know, which leads me into the vaccinations, just to make sure the board's aware of our role as a school district in the Lucas County Vaccination Plan. We, we did MOUs, and we've done them fairly frequently. I know Mr. Sandwich has kind of been doing them on and off for, for quite a few years, where we're going to be considered a point of distribution for the community for anything that might come our way, and, and obviously COVID vaccination's a big one. The last time we did this was the H one N one piece, if you remember back then. And our schools essentially will distribute and, and implement the vaccines. So there's two types. There's an open pod and a closed pod. So we have agreed to be both, but we are for certain going to be a closed pod, which means we implement the vaccination process for our staff, their families, and students who are eligible. And in, in this case, it's kids sixteen years and older. So what that means is we would use our nursing staff, we would use other volunteer nurses, myself, leaders in the district, and we would throughout, I guess, a period of time, it could be one day at each school, it could be a couple of days at each school, go ahead and get kids and staff and their families vaccinated. So again, don't have all the details on when. That's most likely going to be around February-ish, given that we're in phase two of the, of the process, is my understanding. So what we've essentially asked for is that each of our staff members could have up to three additional family members vaccinated. So that's what we, I guess, requested in terms of vaccinations. So I don't know, you take our four hundred and fifty, sixty people times, you know, essentially three or four with themselves, plus the students is who we'd be looking at vaccinated. You guys would certainly all be included in that as well for vaccinations. So I assume that's going to happen. I think all school districts in the area, at least in Lucas County, are, are closed pods and plan to take care of their own. We're also an open pod, which means the Health Department could come in and use our facility after hours if they want to, to help vaccinate the community. So, you know, we are kind of out here on the east side. So I'm assuming that, that we have a strong possibility of them using one of our schools to do that. But they run the whole show in terms of open pods. So is there any questions on that?
Sounds, sounds like the fifties when we did polio.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, the, the goal is to get seventy to seventy-five percent of people vaccinated to get herd immunity. You're going to see a campaign going on around Lucas County. I'll be a part of that. Other businesses in the, in the, in the town will be a part of that in the city. And I'm certainly going to get vaccinated. I think my family all want to get vaccinated. It's a two-part thing, as most of you know. The Pfizer vaccine is twenty-one days apart, and I believe, I think that's right. And the Moderna one is twenty-eight days apart, but they're both two-part vaccinations. So if you choose to get a vaccination, we want you to commit to the second vaccination. An appointment will be made right away, we're being told. And just lastly, the COVID data, just to give you an update as of today, what our COVID data is. As of today, only one percent of our students and four percent of our staff are in quarantine. And that's down significantly from where we were a while ago, when we had to shut down before Thanksgiving. Obviously, that is a direct result of not being in school. So that one's, you know, it's done its job in terms of the number of people that are quarantined. We have a total of ninety-three documented positive cases, fifty-nine kids, thirty-nine staff. And that's on our public website that we update daily. I take part in that. Overall, our total staff positive rate is seven point two percent. And our overall student positive rate is one point eight four percent. So that's just the total number divided by the total number of staff or students. So things have slowed down tremendously, obviously, since we've not been in school. And, you know, we, it's a little harder to know what's happening, too, because people have to notify us versus, you know, us being right there. But, but overall, I feel real good where we're at. Nurses are still working every day to, to help support that. So that's all I had. I just wanted to kind of give you some, some updates, unless there's any questions for me.
Hey, Hal, I got a quick question. And as we progress into the winter, what are you planning on doing with snow days? Some districts are going to keep that little sense of normalcy and have snow days, and others, you know, since it's remote, are not.
Right. If we're, if we're, again, right now, if we're remote, what we're doing is we're treating those as, as, you know, school days, because we've given teachers the option to come into the school to teach or to teach from home because of the mandate order that's out there. So with that flexibility, it's kind of hard to call a, a snow day, if you will. Now, the, the intention is to, obviously, if we come back, when we come back on January eleventh, our staff will all be in school, okay, and students will be in school. So moving forward, if we have snow days after January eleventh, we'll treat them as we always have. At least that's how we have it under our contract and how I've, you know, in conversations with our union leadership, we've decided to just keep that the same. So in other words, because our staff are coming in and students are coming in, just like kind of always, and we have a bad weather day, and our buses are running, we're going to treat it the same way. So does that answer the question?
It does. And I suppose the same would be said for delays if we end up back in school.
Yeah, same with two-hour delays, correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Because the hours have not changed at all once we start bringing kids back in person. Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Mulnar.
Welcome. Any further questions for Mr. Gregory? Okay, any old business? Moving on to committee reports, finance?
No report?
Capital improvement, health and safety?
I'll report.
Personnel and policy. We haven't had any new policies yet. I expect will be inundated at the beginning of the year. Academic?
Um, just so everyone knows, the high school is not going to do exams for the first semester. And we kind of expected that. The second quarter ends on December the eighteenth, and the grades for the final second quarter for semester are on January the eighth. And that's about all I have for academic.
Okay, legislative views on?
No report?
Okay, student achievement?
Just quickly, Vicki Chen, one of our seniors, she got second place at the International UN competition. And then I don't know if any of you guys saw in the press recently, Eco Eric Hansen was highlighted again for his outstanding achievement for the community.
Thank you. Okay, moving to board discussion. Do we have anyone who wants to bring anything up this evening? Hearing nothing. Executive session. We will enter into executive session for um, appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, and promotion, purchase of property for public's purposes, conferences with the board's attorney, and matters to be kept required, to be kept confidential. And we will enter into executive session for those things. So we'll come back and dismiss from there, but there will be no further action taken this evening. Everybody ready? We'll go to the next executive session.
We'll dismiss from executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Do we have any special, any regular meetings coming up?
Oh, you know what? That's on the bottom of my thing. We have to look at an organizational meeting within the first fifteen days of January. And the fifteenth is on a Friday, and our regular meeting is on the, would be on the twentieth. So the question is, do we want to move back to the thirteenth and do both meetings at one time? Or, I'm sorry, it would be the twelfth? Or do we want to try and do all of them? Do we want two meetings or one?
So, so Carol, what you're saying is because the nineteenth, which is our normal third Tuesday, isn't within those fifteen days, you're suggesting just for January, move our regular meeting possibly up to the twelfth at six and maybe do the special meeting at five or what, or something like that as an option?
We can do that as an option, or we can have two meetings. We can have one on the twelfth just for organizational. And the regular on the nineteenth.
The regular on the nineteenth. It's up to, it's up to the, whatever, what everyone says. If you want two meetings, we can do two. If you want all of them done on the twelfth, Jane, you would be the one who would be affected by that because of the treasures report.
We're usually closed by then. That shouldn't be a problem, but famous last words, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
I'm okay with it combined.
Combined? Mr. Shea?
I'm with me, whatever.
Mrs. Miller?
Same.
Mr. Zavisky?
I'm good with it combined.
Okay, so that would be on the twelfth, five thirty. Mr. Gregory, that doesn't take very long for organization.
Yeah, five thirty and six, I think, will work.
Five thirty for the organizational and six for the regular.
Immediately following even, you could say.
Okay, following, that's fine. So that would be on the twelfth. Twelfth of January. Okay, then, other than that.
We need to have a motion then to go into executive session then.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. for, for reminding me. I had it written down and overlooked it.
No worries.
Motion to go into executive session. So moved. Second. Discussion.
Who made the second? I'm sorry, was that you, Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Okay, excuse me. Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Okay, so we will leave here and go into the executive session meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you.